Middle ground. Congratulations. I basically think they're still.
No.
Thank you. Thank you. No, I appreciate that. That was where my head was literally just to have.
That's for another day.
Yes.
Another place.
First grade is a fun age, though.
All set? All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Town of Marlboro Town Planning Board. We are going to begin with the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First point of order this evening, as we do have a quorum, our alternates will not be voting members. Sorry, guys. Our first application is for 321 Route 209, Friends and Neighbors. The applicant, Tom Posey, as well as the agent, Bill Eggers. This is regarding a change to a SUP that we had done in the past. You guys have made some changes regarding. Yeah, parking and ingress egress. So why don't you go ahead and just give us a little update if you'd like.
Sure. Are you here for me?
No, no.
Oh, no? Okay, sorry. I thought you.
I don't know.
Happy to bill you, I'm sure.
Sorry about that.
So, yeah, we came in last time to talk about a draft, moving some parking spaces around to allow the Hammerhead turnaround to slot itself. As it did, Max noted some concern about the radius of the Hammerhead last time, and was correct. And so three parking spots from my draft came off at the end once the engineers did it in the CAD program, and those have been slotted over out of the drive on the right. Same premise stands, no reduction in parking, just some maneuvering to work with the landscape.
Great. Excellent. Any comments from the board? Hey, we pull up the draft determination, please. Just so everyone's aware, Sean Marks has looked at all the radiuses and confirmed that everything is up to par. We can skip past all the whereas here.
Actually, sorry. Just a little bit.
What?
Yeah, not right there.
Comments, questions, concerns from the board? All right. We need a motion to approve the determination.
Make that second.
Do you call?
Aye.
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 All right, motion's approved. Doug.
Thanks, yes.
See ya.
Now, now it's your turn, Bill. Our second application is the lot line adjustment in Hofstadter slash Russell. This is the plan here. We have. Harry, you're the point person on this.
Yep. Basically conforms to everything zoning. Bill, you have any comments?
What we've got there is Hofstadter has this little lot in here. And there was some kind of leftover piece of land, land of Russell up here, had sold off a piece over the other side of the road here. Sponge road coming in here. And they're just taking this little kind of orphaned piece and merging it together with that piece there, improvising with something that actually meets the little lot size. And it improved the situation there.
Great. Let's take a look at the determination, please. Take a look at the conditions here. Standard conditions. All right, any comments, questions, concerns from the board? We have a motion to approve the determination.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Let's do roll.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Doug. Bill. On to our third application. This is 3800 Main Street. We are going into a public hearing. This is open space. Land Trust. We have here representing OSI.
I'm representing that, and also we've got Matt Decker here from OSI.
Great. Excellent. So maybe we'll just begin. John, you are our point person on this.
Yes, yes, I am. I took it. And it's basically what we're doing here is the application is to divide that 90 acres and set aside some smaller 15 acres that the town proposes to buy. And that's it. The future plans are really not under review. This is only just simply a subdivision. And that's where we are. And that's why we're here. Simply, simply nothing about what the town plans on doing with it or anything else. It's just a subdivision of a property.
Yeah, and as we alluded to in our last meeting, you know, any future products, projects that would happen on this land would go through a full review process with town, with the planning board. There won't be, this is not a rubber stamp to just go ahead and start developing the property. This is a lot line adjustment or subdivision, very similar to what the last application we just had. Bill, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, that's it. Basically, we're cutting out a smaller portion in the northeast or easterly corner of it, primarily based on different, I understand, different paths of the funding for it. So that's why they're doing it in two separate parcels right now.
Right. Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing here. As always, try to keep your comments concise and pertinent to the application. If it's not on the map, then we're really not here to talk about it right now. So I will make the motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right. All in favor? And as well, please jot your name down on the sign-in sheet and let us know your name so we can keep everybody's comments in line here. So if you're here to speak on OSI, go ahead and raise your hand. Yes, sir. Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Andrew Proctor.
Andrew Proctor.
Just with respect to the map, could you orient us sort of where, for example, like where's, you know, the Main Street? So let's kind of slide a little bit there.
Bill, you want one of these lasers?
So here's Route 209 down here. This is the shopping center plaza down on the other side of it here. This is a vacant parcel across from the plaza there. This is the cache down here. And so in the back here, this is the cemetery, probably cemetery back in here. And still the lane over here, and here's lane coming in over here. The proposed vision is to cut out a parcel of 15 acres roughly shaped like this in this corner of here.
Yes.
Wetland area all the way across. So you've got, it rises up to 209 up and from, there's kind of a narrow bend out here, it's accessible from there, and then wetlands through here, and then all this in the back here.
Who else? Yes, ma'am?
How would one envisage the entrance to that?
So it's, I understand that is to be forever green, undeveloped. Yes.
There'll be access to all of Route 209.
Can you pull in on this map here a little bit, right into this section? We have a hashed mark which appears to be a proposed.
Little farm lane in there with a culvert going under, there's a drainage ditch coming through. And there's an existing culvert there. There's old roadway that comes down here. There's old barn foundation remnants right out in the front here, going to have to be in through there. That would be the access to get into this whole parcel.
So it would have left against him, except?
No, there's no access to Andrew's. With the tax map, parcel viewer says that it does.
Yeah, parcel viewer, unfortunately, there is some inaccuracies within it. You know, even as far as lot lines, they can be skewed up to like 30 feet sometimes. It's just the nature of technology and software.
Well, I guess that's a determination for the town. So, you know, Lot 2 is, you know, our intention is for Lot 2 to become, you know, they said, you know, forever green. You know, we, and, you know, Lot 1 would be reserved to the town. You know, I can't speak for the town, so that's why I'm stumbling on it a bit.
Sure.
I speak for OSI as the current owner. But Lot 1, you know, the idea is that that would be transferred to the town at some point in the future without any constipation. Yeah.
Harry, pop, speak up. Sorry, because I couldn't hear. Did Harry talk a little about the wetlands?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a clarification. OSI owns all 90 acres right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. The town owns 90. Is that correct? So the 14 acres that you're looking at as Lot 1, you want to subdivide it for what reason?
We, we. We're the planning board. We only, we only, as I mentioned when I started this, is that we're only reviewing the subdivision of this 90 acres. What the town wants to do is to be determined. That's not our deal at all. This is only about the subdivision of the 92 acres. Punto final. That's what that is.
We're reviewing the creation of this lot line, creating this line here. That is.
And Hill, do you have any idea what the town, just let me finish my question.
I have an idea, but go ahead.
Do you have any idea of what the town is in place of?
I don't care. It's not, it's not for us. This is not to make about how much they're paying or anything else. We're not privy to the contract.
That's the front town board.
Can I have your name for the record? Oh, yes, Christine.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, just behind you. We can get you next.
Gaines Stack. So bear with me, this is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings, but intuitively, I don't, I feel like there were two parts to this, right? You're carving off 15 acres but not saying what it's being used for, so why is it happening? I feel like it should be a two-part scenario.
First off, we're not carving off anything. This was brought to us by the town, and they're taking the 15 acres. We're not carving it off. We've asked, we've been asked to approve this division. That's it.
But don't you, don't, during your approval process, don't you want to know what the land's being used for?
Well, ultimately, the town doesn't even know at this point. There's, there are so many steps to a process like this, and what we're doing right now is the first piece to that step. If they, if they come and decide that they want to do housing, then they go through the same application, the same review process as any other housing development. Right now, what we are establishing and reviewing in the purview of the board is to make, is to ensure that the creation of this lot meets the standards of our zoning code. That's, that is essentially the basis of our review. It's the basis of our review with any application. Does what the applicant wants to do conform with the code that the, that everybody within the town lives under? Any, like, we said last meeting, like we said at the beginning of this meeting, anything else that transpires or is proposed to transpire will go through a full, in-depth review process. It'll be referred to all applicable agencies, DEC, you know, DOT. It goes through all of that. We have to look at this application the same as we look at, you know, any other application. Somebody comes in, they have a piece of property, they want to cut it up into a few other pieces of property. We have to make sure that we're not creating unconforming lots and that it meets all of the bylaws. That's, that's the extent of our purview as a board.
I understand. It feels to me like this is the first step of something else. Just being honest, I understand that it may not be the right committee, but that's how it feels to me as someone.
Then you need to ask the town board.
Yep.
You've got a couple of them right behind you, or you did.
Sir.
Well, my name is Ronald Pierce. The parcel there, the 15.3 acres, Lot 1, has a significant portion that's state-protected wetland. And does that include the buffer area of the wetland? What's more?
This is great. I think that's more a question for Bill. Does that, does that hashed out area include the buffer?
No, that's, that's just approximately just the wetland.
The buffer area, how far is, is the buffer area 100 feet or 200 feet?
It'd be 100.
100. So on each side of that wetland, 100 feet of it would be protected. Potents can be issued across wetlands, of course, but they have to meet a criteria.
Yep. Including, that's what you're talking about, access into the rear section of the 15 acres would have to be permitted access across that. But there's been historic access across there. Generally, the DEC will provide a permit for something like that. You've got a historic crossing to lands that is otherwise inaccessible.
And then just as a clarification, the bigger lot, the 75 acres, that would be, if this goes through, that will be protected against development in purpose to it.
That's, I understand that's the intention. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Stack.
Yes. Mr. Stack, I'm actually chairman of the Marlboro Town Parks, Recreation Committee. I have some questions. Are there any covenants or restrictions on any of this property that's being considered? Do you care?
I care, but I don't know.
It's not, it's not a consideration as part of any subdivision?
No, sir, on any application.
I'm not privy to anything like that.
Is, is purpose never, ever considered when deliberating on a subdivision? Is that the historical?
Is, if it's, if it's being subdivided for the intent of development, it is 100% considered. If somebody has a plan and says, this is what we want to do with the property, and we're going to put the house here and the septic's going to be here, then that is something that we absolutely consider. But until we have that information, that's something we can't really look at. And again, we're getting back to that same point, which is we don't have that plan. And should we have, you know, a proposal in front of us in the future, it will be reviewed thoroughly.
Will you be making your decision before knowing its purpose?
We can't, no, we, we. On the, on the subdivision.
On the subdivision, we'll make a decision on subdividing before knowing its purpose.
Yes. Yes.
Are there instances where you have done that before? And are there instances where you have never done that before, have not done that? You know what I'm going for, precedent. I want to understand what the precedent is for filing proper precedent procedure. Because it seems to me, when I've done subdivisions, I have to come up with a lot of detail, like buildable lot has to be buildable, with my intended use, what size house, is there a septic design? Where's the backup field going to be? I don't hear about any of that for this.
So, you know, we're talking again, like, do we, do we have a conforming lot here? Yes. Is it a buildable lot? Assuming that it's 15 acres, like, it is technically.
We don't know that it's a buildable lot yet, though, right?
All right, it's over.
As a matter of law, we don't know if it's a buildable lot yet. Is that correct?
What, where?
That's a simple.
I know, but what the board, what the planning board right now is, is basically being requested to do is to look at this lot, this lot, whether it complies with a single lot subdivision and whether or not a single residential unit could, would theoretically, in fact, be placed on that lot. That's all that this board at the moment, because the town board has expressed the statement that if, at some point in the future, public water supply does not come through or until public water supply, that land is going to just be reserved as vacant land.
Got it. So if, so if the board will, could approve the subdivision, not knowing its purpose, and then at such time when purpose is known, there would be another meeting where you would consider that purpose.
It would be probably, at that point, far more, far more meetings.
It would probably be six months of meetings, you know.
It would be very extensive.
Yes, it would not just be, oh, this is what you want to do now? Yeah, go ahead. It's nothing like that. It's, it's.
And then, sorry, I mean, and part of the intent here is that, or the reason that this is occurring, is my understanding, is that the town can't even seek to see whether there's funding, whether they could get the water extended, negotiate with anyone, because the town itself wouldn't be doing the development. They can't work, whether it would be with RUCO or with any other entity unless they have that lot, because they're not looking to take the whole 90 acres and say to somebody, is it possible for you to provide us with a development plan that would work for the community and would meet some of the needs of the community? So that's the intent in creating this two-lot subdivision.
So the town could, go ahead, you could approve this subdivision. The subdivision happens before the town buys it, yes?
Correct.
So then the town could buy it, realize that they can't do anything with it because it's not conforming or there's a lot too many obstacles, and they'll just sit and own.
It will become part of.
Or sell it, you know.
Oh, no, no, no. Their intent, I mean, so what they've stated at the town board meeting is that their intent then would be to include that with the remainder of the land and keep it for preservation purposes.
Right, but there's no obligation to do that. Right? I already know the answer to that.
Yeah, no, I don't. Well, well, no, it depends upon whether, because if they use, and they also don't have all, they don't have enough funds in their preservation fund to purchase the whole thing right now. So if they do use those funds, then yes, the intent would, then, then there would be control, and they would not be using it for other, you know, other purposes, because those funds are coming from a specific tax source that the residents approved in order to purchase.
So you're saying they're not insured. The town's going to buy it yet, or our preservation fund is going to buy it?
No, 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 that's the town. The preservation fund still is the town.
No, 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 there's two different funds, right?
Different funds, correct.
Two different guidelines for each.
Correct, correct.
A lot of restrictions on what the preservation fund can do with the land when they buy it. Are we saying, or do we not even care at this point who's buying it?
The fund is being used by the.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting ahead of ourselves, right? We don't care who's buying. Right now, OSI is coming for an application for subdivision. Do you determine and deliberate that based on that alone? No, I'm understanding what purpose or intent is.
Because there is no, there is no, there is no, there is no true plan, because it's like a pie in the sky sort of.
Sure is.
We, we, right, but it's, it's a, you know, it's an intent in the event that factors come into play in the future.
This is the first of many steps in order for them to try to achieve that.
Correct.
Got it. But back to my other question. You do do subdivisions, not knowing whether they're going to be buildable or not?
Just last month.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, with the Davis.
Yeah, we, you know.
We do it all the time, actually.
It depends on the lot, quite honestly. If, if somebody's cutting up a piece of property into three-acre lots, it's pretty clear that there's, that there's development going on there. We have to know that they are buildable lots. A lot of this size, 15 acres, I, we can guarantee, just shy of guarantee, that there is a way to prove a septic system and build a single resident, single-family residence on that house, which is essentially what we are considering right now as a board. Are we creating a lot that can be, that can support a single-family residence?
So how does the board determine whether they should consider whether it's buildable or not? Right, you say there are times when it's obvious to you that it's going to be used to buildable, you're applying certain criteria, there's times when you're not. Is that written down, or is that just your own judgment as a board?
It's the board judgment, but it's typically around five acres. If something, if we're over, if a lot is over.
Is that your own internal guidelines to help you work through that process?
That's the sort of standard across, industry standard, let's say.
Yeah.
For any other planning.
Standards, but you guys have to ultimately determine what is.
No, but I mean, in general, any planning board regionally here would, with that acreage size, would not be requiring a septic.
Do we know what the current zoning is for this parcel? And would the zoning change?
No, we don't, we don't change zoning. That's not within our, again, not within the purview of the board.
So the kind of zoning that is also is not relevant?
No, it's relevant, and we, and we have it here. It's, it, again, it's like, it doesn't meet the zoning requirements for that, does it, does it meet the zoning requirements for that, that zone?
Yes.
We're over three acres, we're, you know.
Got it. Its use could then change its zone, which is another sequence of events that have to be gone through to make that change.
Correct, and it wouldn't happen at this board either.
Right, okay. There was a, my last comment is the notion of forever green. So I don't know if people understand what that means, but forever green doesn't mean there'll be nothing ever built on it. So the town bought the meadows from the OSI. The meadows is one of the properties that my committee oversees. And there is an ability to build structures on that property. There's guidelines and restrictions of the type of structure, but you can build structures. There is a parking lot, a bigger parking lot.
Kai?
Just to ask you that you addressed the board rather than other members of the public here.
Are you here where I look?
Well, what I care more is that.
I have a question in the whole room.
Thank you.
Please don't feel excluded. So forever green, does that mean no building? You would all agree with that, right? Or you don't, you don't care?
I'm going to just.
Part of the purview of this discussion.
Yeah, I think it's not part of the discussion, but that's only my opinion. Maybe the chair may have some view on that. We're not.
It's trying to shed some transparency to the process, that's all.
Well, we're, we're, we're trying to be very transparent about it. At the outset, we said we're only looking at dividing. We're not getting into definitions of, or looking to make an argument about anything. It's just what it is, end of story, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm trying to understand how deliberations are made, what criteria is used, when it's followed or not, whether it's judgment or written law.
It's a little accusational, though, that, to say that we're, you know, not doing our due diligence on something that we are truly doing our job as a board.
It's the difference, as you wish. It's more me just trying to understand your process. And does it come off as challenging process? Perhaps, but I think that's healthy. People understand that the process is being followed, it's documented, it's consistent, and it's transparent.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's Wendy.
I have a question for OSI. You're the ones who were requesting this subdivision. Is OSI?
OSI, the town.
OSI is currently the owner of the property, and that's who the, the application is being handed. Is OSI is the owner of the property?
I, I just want to know who's requesting subdivision? Is OSI?
Yes.
And has OSI ever done any, that's a nonprofit, ever done anything like this?
I'm going to answer that.
No, this is, this is potentially a model and a trial. And they're using this as a, as, as a, looking to see what the process works. But OSI's purpose is to purchase land and to preserve it.
But that could be challenged, is really my question. The second question is, is there any reason why you would ever say no to a 15-acre?
As long as it meets the zoning requirements, we as a law, we as a board are required, it's our duty to approve it.
No, I understand your point. I don't understand the OSI bringing it, so.
Well, any person who owns a piece of property within the town can apply for a subdivision.
But that's a person.
Or entity, LLC, any, like, most of the, actually, a fair amount of the applications we see are LLCs. They're not actually one person. You know, it's, it's.
Of course.
The subdivision?
I, I mean, I'm sure if we go back through, we could find some. I, you know, off the top of my head, I can't think of one specific example of a not, not-for-profit applying for a subdivision. But we have had not-for-profits apply for all kinds of different, you know.
Thank you.
I mean, not that she's not-for-profit.
Yes, sir. Rich, let's have a look again. I was wondering if someone could speak to why that shape of lot one, why go all the way down into the field like that, not to go all up on 209, and having to go through all that wetland? Is there anyone who can speak to that? I'm sorry if this is not the right space, or I'm later to the process of this. Whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
With your permission, please. You know, I, I work with Billups Space Institute, and we purchased this property to see as much of it protected as possible. And there were a lot of development scenarios contemplated on this property that were a lot less than 75 acres protected. That wetland would have been impacted. And in working with the town on how to protect the most amount of this property, this is the configuration that we were able to come to this planning board. As far as lot two, I can say 100%, you know, that is why we purchased the property to protect. That section of the property, as much of it as possible. As far as lot one, it does seem to me that that is the place where if development was going to go on the property, it has the least impact on the conservation values of the property that we are here to try to protect. And then beyond that, what happens with lot one in the future, that is where my role, and that's, that's on the plan.
So actually, there's a different panel committee to talk about where the lot one is.
No, I think the shape is, was configured through conversation with folks at the town. And in my humble opinion, that lot one is the area where, if developed in the future, it would have the least impact on conservation values. You know, because there's that causeway that goes across already, and there's the area in the front that, you know, has, has the front, the best front of the ground on 209.
Yeah. Why not just take that's good front, front area along, so I think that's going to happen. And I'm sorry, this is.
No, I mean, so ultimately, like, it is not really for the board to, to consider. Like, we have, every applicant has the right to ask for whatever they want. It's then up to us to say, yes, this conforms, no, it doesn't conform. It, it's, again, like, it's not really part of the deliberation here.
There's no formal plan. There's no formal plan.
We're, we're, I, I think really here, a lot of the questions we're asking and discussing and talking about here are all going to be things that we're talking about whenever there is a plan, you know, and so.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
I was just wondering, I don't know if this is part of the, our mountain, or not, excuse me, like, when you were considering what lots to allow. But I know, like, from what I've understood, OSI, and you guys decided, but you might understand, but I, if you were able to zoom out on that, OSI likes contiguous properties. And by going all the way down into there, it seems like you're cutting off. I live close to there, so I know, like, that's a major deer run through there in those fields coming across from our new meadows through the other field, across the street through the fields. So it's just, to me, it just seems an odd way to, to do it. And so, there's that.
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially the applicant's prerogative to propose whatever plan they want. And then it's our job to say, yes, this conforms, no, it doesn't. We're, we're a quasi-judicial board in that, that, like, we don't actually make judgments as far as, oh, this is something that, ah, let's wait a word. This makes sense, essentially. It's more, does it conform with the code? That's, that is, that is our job as a board, is to make sure that what is being proposed and what we're approving or not approving conforms with the code. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Lindsay Grossman. I know you don't do zoning changes, but certainly you must know what the current zoning is. And that's my question. What is the current zoning of lot one?
Current zoning of lot three.
R3, yes, we're, this, this lot is in the R3 in the B1 district.
Can you explain and explain English for those who don't know what that, what both of them mean?
R is residential, B is business.
Okay, you said R13, and what was the other?
R, R3 and B1.
Okay, what does the three mean?
So we have R, R2 and R3. It, it's basically different locations within the towns are, are different zones. And if you go on the Ulster County Parcel Viewer, you click your map layers, you can select municipal boundaries and zoning, zoning districts. Different districts, different areas have different requirements as far as amount of acres, setbacks. They basically have different, yeah, different criteria for how the lots need to be designed in order to conform to the code.
I'm sorry, just to call up, so R3, a component of lot one is residential. And then E1, what does E stand for? You said B, sorry, I misheard you. Okay, could you show roughly, or explain roughly in lot one's area on the map where residential versus business is?
We can pull up the parcel viewer and, and show you the municipal boundaries.
We know publicly that there's the intent to put affordable housing here. I know, it's not your purview. But it is helpful for us, as you are having data points that maybe not everyone here is having, at least it helps us put the puzzle piece together.
Yeah, if we go up to map layers. Municipal boundaries and non-zoning, municipal zoning.
She doesn't read the boundaries.
So all, all of the green there is the R district. The B is the, sorry, the red is the business district.
So the, the business goes over the current wetland, wetlands, which is in lot one, is that right?
It's.
It's the whole thing, is the.
I mean, it's, it's almost impossible, based off of this map, to determine exactly the relationship between the business district and the, the proposed subdivision here.
Is that your hash line on the side when you look at your subdivision map? What you, it says, that's why you draw a line?
This isn't relevant to your decision-making process.
No, correct. Yeah, no, it's not. We're, we're kind of.
Reason, it doesn't matter.
Well, I know, it, it, it matters so long as it conforms to the, so like, if we, we couldn't create a, a one-acre lot here, you know, like, that, that's just something.
It's 15, and it conforms to both zoning guidelines.
Yes.
Zoning designation guideline.
Yes. Anybody else to comment on this while we're figuring this out? Or can you just bring back up the other map for us? Yeah, it, it does almost appear as this, that this line here follows the edge of that boundary. I can't say that for sure, that's just from first glance here, that's kind of what that appears to be.
Is the expectation, like, the, oh, lot one, the land by 209 would be the business component, and then residential behind it?
No, we don't, we don't really, no, unfortunately. This is, this is, again, we're, we're considering the creation of this lot line. That is, that is what we are looking at right now, is the creation of this lot line.
So you're assuming as a planning board, are you aware of, of given plans connecting the meadows, the meadows part with, with lot one?
No, and if that is proposed, we will review it. I mean, that's, I'm, I'm not aware of anything along those lines. And anything that, you know, is proposed for this piece of property in the future will be revert, reviewed thoroughly by the board. We will all have a chance to speak your minds at those meetings as well.
I'm a little bit confused when you say that there's no plan. Plan was developed by the preservation committee, not your committee. But it's a plan.
We don't develop plans here.
I understand, but one exists.
I can't see that, yeah.
This exists, and it's on the website, and we did, this is a plan, and it's got all of the little maps that you've got there and more. So I, I don't see why you'd say there's no plan. There is definitely a plan. It's a preliminary plan, but it certainly expresses the intent for all of that property. But what it doesn't express is how much the town is going to pay for this, but that's not your problem. To have to say that there's no plan, and then you're not aware of a plan, I know this is very frustrating for you, Mr. Farrar, but we, we have all of this in our heads, and we need to get a little bit clearer on it.
We, we too have heard all this type of stuff, just like you've had, heard about, oh, maybe it's going to connect here. We don't know this, and again, that doesn't come under what we can do.
How can you make a decision about?
Because I'm only concerned about the line and if it's conforming. That's all that really.
If the lot is large enough to fulfill any of the zoning requirements.
Zone size, it's not water, it's not access, it's not anything like that.
It's only a line. Now, if they, if they come to back and they want to do, do something else, then it becomes a use, and then we can look at something.
Anybody else? All right.
Want to close it?
Yeah.
Make a motion to close this public hearing.
Make a second. We'll do, show our hands on this. Aye.
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 I say nay.
Amelia? Motion carries. Let's take a look at the determination. We'll read, read through these whereas here, if we can roll down to the, the whereas. So just to kind of reiterate this right here. No development is planned at this time. So anything, any future use of this land will go through a full review process in front of this board. I'm good through number three. Is anybody else?
Can't see it.
Fill that in, Laura. This is the determination. This is the document that we vote on. Hey, I will make a motion to approve the determination. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, we need to do a roll. Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I appreciate everybody's concern here, and I understand that there's a lot of questions surrounding this, and that it's been, you know, there's been some contention around it. All we did this evening was establish two lots out of one. Anything else that has to happen, or where it's proposed to happen on that land, will be thoroughly reviewed, and you can rest assured that we don't take these kinds of things lightly. We don't just rubber stamp things here, okay? This right here was as about as cut and dry of an application as any of the, of the other subdivisions that we see. And because there's been kind of this aura around it, I can understand the frustration, maybe, or the, the questions. But I'd, I'd like you all to, to be, you know, leave this room knowing that we're not just approving things without putting careful thought into them. Our job as a board is to look at the application and see, does it meet our code? This 100% without a doubt meets our code. Anything further that happens on this property will go through a very thorough review process, and we'll make sure that one meets the code, and two, is held to a higher standard, because it's going to be the town that's doing it, okay? So I apologize if there's been some contention here between the board and, and the public here, but I just want you all to know that we're not, we're not in the business of just letting people do whatever they want. We, we have a very beautiful community here, and we're not in the business of, of turning it into something we don't want to all live in and enjoy for the rest of our lives here. Thank you all for coming out and giving.
I really appreciate you saying that, and I, I really do. Because what I've seen prior to you saying something that's heartfelt and emotional has been really, really just very dismissive of, of the group. And you're right, we all have to work together, we're a community. But I, I think that some people on your committee should take a deeper look inside themselves in how they do their things. That's all. I don't want to fight with anybody, I'm just giving you my honest opinion.
Thank you.
And, and thanking you. And and thanking you for your.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our fourth application of the evening, which is the modification to the Ridgewell Gym. Nick, right? Michael, sorry. Well, this is a site plan modification, reconfiguration of an interior space. We reviewed this at our last meeting. We had some touches as far as parking and whatnot, but I think we've kind of gotten to an answer on all of this. Dave, you're our point person on this.
Yeah, I thought I thought I saw Sean check in as he.
Yeah, he left.
Looked like, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Laura, that based on the renovations on the interior of this building, it was going to require four more parking spots, which I don't think anybody considers as a problem.
And we have 68 spots.
Okay. So, I mean, that was the only thing that that I just wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I mean, this is just showing the new spaces or the the new configuration. You have the parking.
Yes.
We have a site plan that shows that.
I believe.
You have 68 spaces, you said?
Correct, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
With the overflow lot, we've never ever had a.
Well, it's just a, it's like Sean stated in the determination, it's a mathematical equation.
Yeah, so the email I got from Sean, it was no issue. He communicated with me on that.
For the public, it, there's 68 spaces, but the four means that over and above the design, you need four more, but they all are well within the 68 spaces. He has excess still.
Yeah, you still have excess parking.
We just changed the number. We just changed the number on the on the application.
Yes, I mean, essentially, we're, yeah, designating four of what was previous. So his excess spaces will probably drop from 30 to 26, you know, that's.
Just a number game.
Yeah.
Let's take a look at the the determination, please.
Can you see her?
Yeah, I'm good. You can zoom in a little bit, possibly.
That's good. That's better.
Seeing the four paragraphs, 313, 20, 25, right?
Oh, yeah. And modification is spelled incorrectly under the heading also, site plan modification. Right.
In the bold.
Yep, in the bold.
Four requests.
Right before request.
Down next line. Need an I in between.
Yeah, between it.
And C. We're not using AI on this.
That's all. The rest of this looks good to me here. Yeah, I'm good with all this. Everybody else? Right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry?
Okay.
All set, Michael?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we, do we need to vote on this?
No, I I don't believe we have to do a roll on that. No. All right. This is our fifth application of the evening, Lexington Center Extension Request. On that, okay, roll.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, great. Number six, we have a new application. Before we get going on that, I need a motion to open and accept the application. Yes, Lexington Extension, right? Yeah, Lexington. Oh, did I say something?
No, you just said number six.
Oh, sorry. Number five, Lexington Center Extension Request. Do I have a motion to accept and open the application?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. Just real quick, what what are the conditions that, you're just waiting for border health, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So. Okay, so that's that's the only thing you're hung up on? Okay. Excellent. And other than that, everything's going well down there? Glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. All right, let's take a look at the determination. So this will just be giving them another year to meet their conditions that were set out in their original application. They're they're just being hung up by the border health a little bit, but.
Year may not happen in months, but it may.
Right, let's scroll down a bit here. This is.
I read this.
Yeah, very straightforward.
Oh, Lexington.
Yeah.
Bottom, one thread here.
Yes, in there.
If you could even say that. If you had a lift.
Mike Tyson was in here.
He's writing me the letter.
Okay, I will make a motion to grant the extension. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't need roll for that. Confidently don't. Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number six. Subdivision, Shupak. Brendan, you're our point person on this. And we have Christopher Zell here.
Yes, I am.
Hi, how are you, sir?
How are you?
Thank you. So would you just talk us through this a little bit?
Well, this is a 55-plus-acre parcel owned by Ronald Shupak off Crum Road. Mr. Shupak would like to divide it into two lots and convey one lot to the adjoining owner, Crum Ridge LLC. No, there's no plans for any kind of building on either lot. David Crum Ridge would like to buy it for privacy, and it was part of what was lot three on a previous subdivision, so that's.
Laura, can you use them in just a little bit for us?
That's pretty much what it is. It's a two-lot subdivision. One lot will be 25.27 acres, and one will be 29.2649 acres. One will have fundage on Route 213. The other way has a existing right-of-way that was on the original subdivision map, which was done for Harold Hoff. It was done in 2000 for Ronald Rushner and Harold Hoff. It was lot three. That's why the designation is 4A and 3B. There's no, no plan construction on either lot.
Okay, we need to classify under seaker. Keep in mind that this is a type two.
You accept it?
Do you want to open it?
Yes. Oh, my gosh. Motion to open and accept the application.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to classify as type two under seaker?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to set a public hearing.
Lot line adjustment. Right, you're not merging it with the other.
No, we're not merging merging it with the other one right now. She'd like to keep it separate.
If it was a lot line, they could, they could waive the public hearing.
I know that.
So I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for May 19th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. See you next month, sir. Thank you. Very straightforward.
Get them back in if you like.
4.5 acres.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I have one question. How'd you get Andrew out of bed?
Number seven, subdivision on 209 Beaverkill Road.
That's me. That is you, John. Here we go. I wish those people were still here because we could pull up the the site and they could see that.
I mean, that, this last application was essentially the same thing, so we'll just let bygones be bygones.
This has, but this has everything on it. Can we pull that up?
This is Beaverkill. I think the last time we were on Zoom, right?
Yeah.
First, we need a motion to open and accept the application.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to classify it?
Sure. I'll make a motion to classify as type two under seaker. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think the only thing that kind of jumped out at me with this one was the topography as far as the driveway grade goes, and I think you spoke to Sean a little bit about that already.
As far as Sean and nobody contacted Luke, the topography map was incorrect. It's about 16. On site, it's maximum 14.
Okay.
We've, we've, so there's 150-foot run of like 13 and a quarter. They've brought up the grade. Generally speaking, no more than 20% of it is above. See this run here?
You can point, you can use this right here. It's that little red, yeah.
Yeah, so this 100-foot section starting at the 480 number to allow here is about 13 and a quarter.
And with cotton filler, you think you can get that down to 10 to 12 somewhere in there?
No, I think.
I think this is the most you're going to get? Okay.
We've, this section of the road down the best stream is already completed. There was a driveway curb cup, non-mature, address permanent, all together, a lot.
And then the other piece, I mean, not that this is really anything substantial, but definitely something to consider is, you've been in touch with the, your or your engineer, I imagine, has been in touch with the DEC? Yep.
Is dealing with the bridge crossing.
Okay, great.
It's going to be a 14 by 18. And then the house, the proposed house sites are just not in this plateau there. That's all.
Do we, what about the the septic field there? Is that already been engineered and or tested, or how's that?
So the ground has been perched. There's no border health approval, but the setbacks shown on this proposal map show more than adequate ways for a primary reservoir on each of the lot.
I know it's kind of, it's downstream of the reservoir, but is this something that the DEP has to weigh in on? As far as the septic stuff?
So this.
It's pretty tight on that.
Secondary channel is actually, it dies here. So the Asofas is down here. So there's no flow going out into the Asofas.
That's some backwater, so to speak.
Correct. But the DEC is going to be involved with the bridge engineering, I think is going to be dealing with that.
So without BOH approval, what we typically like to see is a letter of feasibility from the engineer. So if you could get Scott to put that together for us, you have the letter of feasibility. Perfect. Great. Yes, if you could send that over, that would be fantastic.
We need pullovers on the driveway?
Every 500 feet, yes. And I think that was eight? No, five, 500. So Laura, can you pull the map up? Just scroll up. Do you know offhand? I don't have my pointer anymore. I'm just sitting here, sorry. This distance, right? She's dead. Oh, yeah.
There, there.
It's working, sorry.
Deeds activation performed the work, and all the code pullovers are.
Okay. We need it represented on the map. We just need to see that. So wherever, you know, every 500 feet, you need to have, you know, it's a 20 by 70 or 20 by 50. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it's something we can, you know.
Get it from the building.
Yes, yep. And we just need to see that reflected on the map. Anything else on the board? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Is there a letter on file for the fire chief for the grade?
Not that I've seen, no.
10%?
That's that's Lou, huh?
Is it Lamontville?
Yeah, it's Lou. Yeah, but that's Lou, right?
Yeah, he's been, he's been through the road, but it's my understanding that I can't, can't see 10% for more than 500 feet.
All right, well.
You can just send a, send a letter that basically says he's.
Lou is fire chief, not as highway. Yep.
If this is, or or if it's in Sean's district, I don't know where this is.
No, this is in Sean's. Yeah. So that is something we are going to want to see from him as well. We've opened, classified. We're ready to set the date for the public hearing. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for May 19th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, yeah, if you can make those updates to the plans, and we'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up, Dave. You're up, Dave. Dan, right?
Yep. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Must be that time of year again.
Happy festival. Hello, Laura. Dan and I are here-
Hold on one second, Elizabeth.
I'm sorry.
Motion to open and accept the application.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we've been in communication with Sean and many of you guys have seen it, but we have a paper copy and there is a new email with an incredibly minute change because the base map did not include the lot line revision that we did here. So Sean, would you like these? Sean told me, and we have the corrected version, but you don't have the corrected version. So you guys approved this lot line adjustment. And that was so this road, which is, you know, critical egress and fire trucks and we had to build out a fire lane. So that is now entirely on our property. So we are very happy about that. And that's the, that's the main change in what we have there.
What are the changes from last year to this year?
So you can speak to that. So it's a smaller event. Last year it was amazingly wonderful event. Dan's been on our property. It went very smoothly. We monitored sound levels, et cetera, et cetera. But the event lost a whole bunch of money. And we lost a whole bunch of money. And that's because it's just really hard to do these events. We still donated anyway to Farming, still donated to the Roundup Valley Growers Association. And there was an enormous amount of joy there. A lot of people from the community. And Dan's been, and I don't want to speak for you, walking this fine line between bringing wonderful musicians, a ton of local musicians, and keeping it affordable, but still being able to pay for security and the costs and the tents and whatnot. And so he wasn't, I'm gonna speak for you, wasn't gonna do it this year. And that's why we're coming to you relatively late. You know, it's, it's hard and a lot of people are canceling and downsizing events for various reasons. And I said to him, don't give up yet. And so the event, the event is smaller. Instead of, we asked for 1,000, 1,200 people. The decision is to ask for 800 a day. There's been quite a lot of discussion with Sean about what would make sense so that we could sort of downsize the event. So there's a Friday night event that I think we're hoping to sell 500 tickets. I don't know who that's, that's the formal ask.
Again, we're all, that's it. That's all we're concerned about, what the formal ask is. And just it is 500.
So the formal ask is 500 on Friday, 800 on Saturday, and 800 on Sunday. And it's essentially the same plan that you guys approved last year for more people.
The only key differences in the plan this year, given the reduced attendance size, is the slight reduction on the DOT requirements. And obviously, I think that's essentially that description. But the hope is that by dialing it back to 800 people, I think on our busiest day last year, we had about 700, a little over 700. So we have good baseline benchmark for what to expect as far as vehicle, while human, infrastructure that we need to support it. So the hope is that some of that overhead that, you know, certainly isn't a bad thing to have more traffic control and signage and, you know, folks on Route 213. Those things trigger a number of additional costs in terms of insurance, in terms of having to bring in a traffic control third party. And for maybe the state police who's there. So the hope is that by dialing it back to 800, we could essentially deal with traffic control on the site, which I think we're prepared to do. And we also proportionally dialed back a few other aspects of the, of the event. But essentially apart from that, it's almost the same footprint, the same, the same plan.
So who makes that determination whether you do the traffic control or state police gets involved?
So Michael at DOT, I think, and I don't know what the magic number is. And my, my understanding is that for having spoken with him, it's a very subjective thing, essentially their call. And I think the hope is that, you know, essentially trying to dial it back to the degree that we have, the specific things that we won't need are electronic signs to be posted week in advance, the state police to be on-site during the exit period, the multiple traffic control people on Route 213 directing traffic, and also some of the signage on 213. So I don't know what they would require at 800 people, but for 1,200 people, it triggered a bunch of things that, you know, essentially made it not nearly as viable for us.
Kind of cumbersome.
What's the dates on this?
November 12th to 14th.
I think we should circulate this. DOT. I think we should circulate it to everybody and I think a lot of them are gonna come back. No comment. But I think we, in order to get ahead of, you know, a lot of this stuff, we should just go ahead and circulate to everybody that we circulated to last year.
Fire department.
Yep. So let's just come up with that list. FD, DOT.
County.
Yep. County.
Improvements were made last year, by the way, for fire approval for that road. Essentially the fire lane leading up to the gathering area. The road was widened 20 feet where this brush was cleared. And we installed a code compliant H shape turnaround at the end. And that was, that was inspected and I think signed off on. So hopefully there isn't anything.
I know there was something last year as far as the walking paths went and like the clear demarcation of walking path versus, you know, vehicular traffic. So whatever improvements can be made to, to more clearly demarcate where people should be walking versus where people are driving. I know that that was-
Just a comment on that. I agree with you. And it's a source, as the landowner will have concern for me.
Sure.
So last year we had pretty good signage and we had some enforcement with staff there. People will walk wherever they want. That's what we learned. And you can say to them literally, do not walk there. There's a car coming. And people are, you know, like a lion, as we said. But, but I think if we amp that up more, even more signage, maybe some roping and make it really clear to people, bigger do not enter signs and stuff like that, I think we can handle that. The reality is they were having a very good time.
Part of the other thing to consider is that we have kept all of the parking down below near the entrance area. So there's no attendance, attendee parking on the site except for handicap parking. So the only vehicles that are loyal on that road are either handicap parking for attendees or artist arrivals, which typically happens before doors are open, or staff. So there isn't like a large volume, but I, I think that is something you could-
We actually took out two roads of the orchard to widen the tractor path. They weren't doing very well. Unfortunately, they were honeycrisp, but they weren't doing very well and getting a lot of deer damage. But there's a lot of room for pedestrian because the way the orchard is oriented, there's ample wide alleys and overall it's worked pretty well.
They just have that temporary electric fence that you can just put in. I'm kidding.
No.
I'm kidding.
Slides on those fences, we have one. And they say, do not touch electric fence. And then number of adult people who see that and just have to touch it. They have to see, it's really a lot.
The trade-off of having folks walk off of the road, I think creates a good idea is that if they're walking through orchard or something that isn't like a pedestrian pathway, it is a greater risk of looking in. Or something just like that.
Now, I also know that last year there was some issues regarding electricity.
Yeah, so that, we had a line that we've had ever since we did the power show coming from our property there installed by, you know, professional electrician. It's been there for five years. It's been looked at. But last year, in the fit of trying to do the right thing, unintended consequences, I had them bury the line. It was just running along the surface of the ground. And I thought it would be so much smarter to just cut a trench and bury the line and put it in a tube. But it turned out that that was the wrong thing to do. I did not know. And so that has been entirely removed. It's not there anymore.
Any other comments or questions, concerns on the board here?
I understand the people. Do you have Department of Health?
Yep, I have BOH.
Do whatever you want.
Fire department.
Still gonna go where the hell they want to go.
Yeah, that's actually something we should just go over.
That for years.
Less for circulation here. Fire Department, Department of Transportation, County Planning Board, Board of Health.
State police.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we could circulate it to them and, you know, again, we won't get anything back, but we'll, we'll circulate it to NYSB as well.
We would hope that they would understand it's a smaller event. And we've had informal conversations with some of those guys, you know, before we did it this year. I know you've talked to the DOT and I've talked to firemen and I've said, okay. And a lot of talks with Sean. It's gonna be a smaller event. And I'd like them to know that as well. I'd like that to be-
Yeah, they're gonna get this, this exact application is gonna be sent right to them for their review.
And they didn't have problems last year. So I would presume a smaller event would not pose a problem.
Still have to circulate.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to circulate to Fire Department, Department of Transportation, County Planning Board, Board of Health, and the New York State Police. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It looks to me as if we're ready to set the public hearing in this. The only thing is that we, you know, we might still be waiting on some, some comments. So we might leave the public hearing open if we haven't heard back from some of these agents, agencies. But I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the May 19th meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. See you next month.
Thank you. Thank you. I have extra paperwork. Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Classified for Seeker, we're gonna do next time or?
Um.
That's what I was just writing down. Secret determination.
Yeah, we can, we can do that next time. Yep.
We've already gotten past that at this point.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes for March? I have a motion to approve the minutes for our March meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any other business anybody from the board would like to discuss?
I would like to have a minute. I'm only speaking for myself, not the board. But I'm going back to the accessory dwelling unit issue that we had proposed changes to the, to the draft law. And I'm real disappointed that the board didn't see fit to include any, any of the items that we identified as we felt as residents of the area that needed, that needed, would be a good change for the law. That's it. I'm, I'm real, it takes the wind out of your sails when you try to think you're trying to do something good and you, and you spend time and you try to develop something and really think it through because it's not something that we willy-nilly do. And these are changes that I fear that if, 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 under a perfect storm would come and we'd have, have people losing property values and all sorts of problems with, with, with this if it was to be full-bloomed. And, and so, and that's all I have to say. It's only, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm, I'm very disappointed.
Understandably. I mean, you, myself, and Harry went to the, to the town board and gave them our opinion. You know, it's almost like we're on the other side of that discussion we were having earlier today with, you know, the town board's prerogative. Unfortunately, you know, they, they vote on the laws. They, we gave it, you know, we gave them the advice that we could. We gave them our, our comments and I, I would have liked to seen, I would have, myself liked to have seen some of our comments incorporated, you know?
Absolutely.
Didn't play out that way and that's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
And apparently, what I saw tonight was that having, having the parks and whoever's coming up with these plans that are on the website are doing nobody any favors if, if.
Well, they're not plans as much as they're-
I understand they're proposals.
Proposals, preliminary ideas, stuff like that.
Maybe they could make it-
I'm disappointed that there were two members of the, of the town board sitting here.
Yeah.
And they didn't, they didn't even make a comment in, in the defense of the-
Of us.
Of us, really. And it's, it's kind of typical of that word and that sense of arrogance that I've-
So all, all we can do is do the best job that we can do. And, you know, tonight was obviously a somewhat contentious meeting and I tried to preface it with like, you know, we're just here to look at the lot line and that like this is, and, you know, we knew that people were gonna just spout off what, and you can't just shut it down because you, you need to listen and you need to hear what they have to say to an extent. You know, like I said to them after this whole thing, after that whole thing wrapped up, when there is a real plan, you know, we will look at it. We will review it the right way. We will go through the process.
Is it still live?
And we want this all to be on, you know?
No, no, I agree. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, I sit at both tables, so I will say, whether you want me to say it or not, but I think you'll. I have said to Rich and to the board on several occasions that the dialogue between the board and the consultants that are working on planning changes, you know, it doesn't seem as if there's, there's a, it's not that it's not transparent, but there doesn't seem-
There's no input.
It's not an open dialogue.
Correct.
And I, and I think that they're not doing that with bad intention. I think that it's a different, you know, they're, they're working heavily with a consultant that is not integrated into the two boards. What I think that, the truth of the matter is, I expect that, that there will be another board member next year that will have considerable experience.
In planning.
In planning. And that, that, that voice will then carry on that board and, and there will be a change in how these boards interact.
You know, one can only hope.
Certainly hope so. Certainly.
I mean-
It just felt like we've got someone that's sending this and is, if it's got this imprimatur on there and it's like, wait a minute, you know, where's this coming from?
And there are sometimes clearly the, you know, there are different perspectives and policy and thought process.
Yeah.
And I don't know that anybody anticipated that Filar would have the public outcry that it, it's, I mean, it's sort of an interesting, it's a different group of people. And they had a lot at the, at the town board meeting. And a lot of the information that they're claiming, you know, that the public was saying wasn't available, was clearly discussed and was, you know, and was available. But then there is other information that isn't available. And the problem is that you as a board aren't privy to it because there really isn't anything to be privy to at this point.
But that's no reason not to keep beating that, that dog. Let's just keep whipping it.
I think this town has excellent planning board and it has an excellent town board. Everybody should be proud. Sometimes you just need a little bit more elbow.
Yes, yes.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Sure.
I want to thank you. You know, I know that you have, you have an awkward situation and, and, you know, you have to stick to what, what it is you're doing there. And it, it hurts me to not share a bunch of information. I would share a bunch of information in the hallway and, you know, I think you would share it a lot better after competition.
Should, should you share with us? Well, I want to send that box again. You know, we could, we could see and hear and.
Yeah.
What, what tip?
Really to keep any, I mean, everybody is just, and we just said, I mean, I just, there's no information in, in many ways to share because there's no information. This is really just a, you know, I don't think anybody appreciated the fact that this really is being done as a test model to see whether there is a way of trying to, you know, trying to preserve a piece that was on the market at the same time as trying to provide possibly some, you know.
That's the stuff that, that should have been out there all along and is part of this, this whole thing. Bring everybody along when, when that, when that boat comes, you know? So instead of letting people find out in the hall.
And then the price and the numbers was out there. I mean, it just wasn't.
Yeah.
Without me dialing back in, it wasn't available.
Well, sorry to interrupt your.
Is there anything you want to say? Sorry, because I just jumped in.
I don't have to answer any questions that you all have. I don't want to break, you know, your protocol or anything, but, you know, and sorry that I had to be, this was, this was a surprise. I was gonna be here without, without my child. I had a little childcare snafu this evening, so.
What did you tell the people in the hall that changed, that made, made it all happy?
Well, I don't know if it was all happy.
Okay, well, whatever. Happy Earth.
There is no secret plan out there other than what is out there in public record.
Good.
The town intends to purchase both pieces with different pots of money. One pot of money will protect the majority of the property forever and ever and make it publicly available. And one pot will leave flexibility to do other things with it in the future potentially. And there are no specific plans for those. That's it.
Right. I think that's pretty much what we tried to say, that just didn't really want to hear it from us.
I'm not quite clear on, on Clay's insistence about forever green and, and, you know, trying to, trying to give everybody a edification on, on, you know.
Recreation is not necessarily without some sticks and stones.
I'm sure.
That's all with that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's some maybe misunderstanding or not full understanding of the actual conservation law that governs how the money can be used, which is actually dictated by the state. It's not something that the town just came up with.
Right.
That is all public information. It's a couple pages long, but you can read it and includes what you can and can't do with the money.
That would have been a great opportunity for, for Tim or.
Either one of them. Wouldn't have been able to speak to that.
Well, they're the, they're the, you're negotiating this, right? You're part of that team that's negotiating it or whatever.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, it's something that the town passed, was it 2022?
I mean, the voters passed it. It was adopted by the voters.
A law in the town. I think it's just citizens and residents have different levels of understanding. And I think there can be a lot of confusion over, hey, what's this pool of money? Like, why can't we use this for this? And it's truly restricted by state law.
Yeah.
Passive recreation though is like the headline for it. So, you know, yeah, that could include a pavilion or some bathrooms or a tail, but that's not.
Building housing on it.
There's not housing. You can't build a pool. Um, you can't build, I don't think even like, you know, play courts and fields.
I was gonna say, I don't think like the pickleball and the tennis courts and all of those are not.
Oh, my God. What? No pickleball? We should reconsider.
And for us from as our, you know, we're a nonprofit, we have to achieve our, we're achieving our charitable mission by, you know, by working with the town in this way. The restrictions that are built into that law are protective enough for us to feel that that's gonna be protected forever. It's gonna be open to the public and yeah, there can be some, there can be structures, but the conservation matter, we're trying to protect it.
Thank you very much, sir.
So much.
Appreciate it.
Anything else from the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, guys.
You really have to look at.
Chance do I have? A year ago.
Yeah.
We had that storm come through.
You may have to look at the lines along that.
Along the power line.